Steve Bowers welcoming you to an education forum that has been organized by the Chamber here in Jackson is being co-presented with E+ TV6. We are focused in this next half hour on the race for school board District 6 that is currently represented by Janice Hampton who is with us and being challenged by Robert Kerlin and Andre Givens-Moore and all are with us and we appreciate them being with us and we appreciate the Chamber organizing all of this and for this opportunity for this very, very important discussion. What I want to begin with and we'll begin Janice with you, people get confused by these districts, I know I do. When people ask you what is District 6, how do you describe it?
I describe District 6 as a fairly large district that has two seats. District 6, I'm in Position 1 and the other position is Position 2. I've learned recently as I went to the City of Jackson Planning Office that my district is large enough that it extends out to the Forkett Deer River. And I don't know any houses that's located on the river, but I know there's some surrounding it. Also, it includes East Jackson, East Union, some part of the northern aspect. So it is fairly a large district populated with minority of the African-Americans. So District 6 is fairly a large district with African-Americans. But I do say that it extends a little bit farther down to Mo's Cut Off Road. And so with that all been said, and I know some other areas have been adjoint since my coming on in 2012, I just go with what I know at this present time.
Okay. Robert, anything you want to add to that as far as how you describe the district to people?
Well, actually it runs right up through the center of the city. It's a huge district, actually. The perimeter is 37.1 miles. As Janice said, it does extend from Beach Bluff down to the South Forkett Deer River. And then it comes up through East Jackson along the railroad tracks just east of Royal. And then at Lane, it starts to zigzag its way over toward the other side of Highland. From Parkway all the way up to Old Humboldt Road, it's actually both sides of Highland. So it encompasses a ton of different communities. We actually have just under 12,000 voters. The only thing I would differ with is that the City of Jackson over the past couple of decades has become extremely integrated throughout. The district is actually pretty evenly split.
You're talking racially?
Huh?
Racially is what you're talking about?
Yes. But there is a slight majority African-American right now, but it's very reflective of what Jackson itself is, an extremely diverse community. And it's just hard to keep up with any of your districts these days because they're confusing no matter if you're looking at City Council or Accounting Commission or School District. Fortunately, this will be the last election under these zones.
Yeah, we'll get new zones. Andre, anything you want to add to that as far as the description when people ask you about this district because I know it's a confusing thing for people?
It really is. To the people in the district, I think it's absolutely devastating to have a district that large and none of the other ones are that wide and large. And it should be changed and we should have our own district instead of having a Position 1 and a Position 2 because when people go to the polls, they are confused if they should vote for 1 or they should select 2. So it's a no-brainer in that with me. It's just completely a mess and it needs to be completely fixed. Everybody should have their own district number and that number alone because this cutoff, it all revolves around the schools and shutting down schools and shifting people all around Jackson and changing those zonings. And that zoning is terrible for the constituents as well.
And that'll be something to take up with the County Commission because they're going to draw those district lines and those are good.
Exactly.
Let's do a quick rundown. Janice, you've been on this board now. Why are you running for reelection?
Well, I'm seeking reelection because my constituents in my district, District 6, stated that we are on a path of academic growth. We are progressing. And we have been doing so over the past three years. So why change? There's not a need for change at this point in time. So with that being said, I wasn't going to actually run this term. But some constituents and stakeholders said, no, we need you to continue the progress of what Jackson-Madison County School System is already doing in the district. And to have new candidates to come in at this present time would not be beneficial because some candidates come in with different views of what we have already done. I would say this, we've already come to the agreement that new schools need to be built. And so as JCM School and Madison Academics is now in structure, there's no need to change anything. And while we are now doing the new K-8, there's no need of saying that we don't need a new K-8 because we do. As you know, Steve, Pope is an older school. It's been here for a while. And as I toured the school, you know, I noticed that there was rain that was coming from the ceilings and there was need of cosmetic work at Pope Elementary. And so as we voted in the past to say, hey, is a new school beneficial to that particular area? Yes, it is. And I think that it would serve the whole entire Jackson community, Pope would. So I would say that while we are at this time and making plans and continue to know that these schools we need and that we also need more schools possibly being built, you know, why change it? Why at this point in time decide on a specific area not benefiting from what it could in order to have a more bright community? In order to expand, not the northern area, but the East Jackson area just as well. And so with our new schools are coming into progress, you know, I would hate for another candidate to come in on the request of someone else. No, you don't need those schools or either that school is not needed. And so with this being said, I'm running to make sure that progress is being implemented. I have promised the individuals in District 6 that I will continue to run to make sure that the promises that I've made is fulfilled and to make sure that District 6 is represented to the best of its ability. And so I would say that I'm running to make sure that our schools and our students get exactly what they need. And I'm running to make sure that our superintendent would be a success in order to have these things put in place.
All right. Thanks, Janice. Robert, obviously you and Andre see this differently. Robert, why are you running?
I'm running for several reasons. I started following the school board extremely closely back in 2018, right after they passed Dr. Jones's tenure plan. And that plan was passed unanimously. And over the next several months, bit by bit, the board started trying to change up and modify and throw kinks into it to have him look at different ways of doing things that had already been approved. And we've lost the focus of what a school board actually is tasked with under Tennessee state law. A school board only has two main responsibilities. The first of that is to adopt the policies, the goals and the priorities to set the tone for the district. And the second and most important function is to hire a superintendent to execute and implement that plan. Our board has lost sight of that, especially over the last two years. We've had a handful of people on the board who seem to think they know more about running a school system than the man who's actually hired to do it. A school board is there to give the support and the tools necessary to the superintendent and work as an advisory for him or her to run that district. That's what they specialize in. That's what they're hired to do. Watching all of this, I've attended of all of the candidates running. I've probably got the best attendance record at school board meetings for those non-incumbents. I sat in on every one of the superintendent interviews. Yes, the last board drove off our superintendent. We have a new superintendent that they hired. That's part of their responsibility. And over the last decade, we've had five superintendents in 10 years. It's an average two-year term per. It's like a revolving door. We can't even get to a long-range plan because they just barely get it started. And then everybody starts wanting to change everything up and then they leave. Dr. King is a very talented man. He has all of the resources. He's already just in his first couple of months shown incredible building skills with teams and advisors. And he very much respects the teachers. And you can tell that he is really working to try to restore the Jackson-Madison County School System to its rightful place in the top 10% of Tennessee school districts, not the lower 10%. I'm running to try to help him do that by bringing a little bit more of a voice of reason to what our intended responsibilities is. We're not running to run the school board. We are running to be a support system for the school board and help to guide it.
All right. Thanks, Robert. Andre, why are you in this race?
I'm in this race. I am a product of the East Jackson community. I have been very, very, very much involved in the community. The community donors that donated from my previous campaign when I ran for a city council. Asked me back in November, would I run? People were calling my phone, meet me in the grocery store, asked me, please, please, please run. We need change. We need change. I had to think about it because I do have a full-time job of taking care of my family and that's my first priority. And so I had just finished the race and so I had to think about it really, really hard. And there were a lot of things brought to me about arts in schools, JCT, Isaac Lane. Just a lot of different things were brought to me. Big time people, small individuals, teachers. I've got so many calls, so many emails in my inbox. So I had to say to myself, do I turn my back on the people I promised that I would help just because I didn't fulfill those obligations by getting in that city council seat? Do I turn my back on the people? 70% of our people in public schools are African-American, black and brown. And we're doing poor. Our schools are doing poor. We may have a couple of schools that are doing okay. But overall, our testing, we're at the low 5% in the whole Tennessee. And that concerns me because I have 14-plus grandchildren. I have a five-year-old that's just going to be attending that comes out of Georgia. And he's very intelligent. He's very bright. And I don't want him to lose what he's learned by getting behind from there not being enough comprehension and structure for our children. Teachers are crying out for help. They want to see somebody visual. They want to have a person they can communicate to communicate to the superintendent. They want their views that they want to take to the county commissioner. They want to be able not feel like they're pressured or their jobs will be in jeopardy if they speak up. And they felt that in the past. So that is the number one reason to help, to assist all families and to do what I can productively moving forward, not speaking on what's happened in the past. That's not important. We just need to help our families, our teachers, our students and the whole public school system to achieve greatness with excellent and academic excellence and cultural diversity. And that's what I'm speaking on.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Janice, when you hear these comments from Robert and from Andre and they say, "School board got out of its place or things need to be changed," your reaction to that?
Well, you know, as I reflect back, Steve, you know, it's not only in this district. When you have a variety of individuals that serve on the board, they have different opinions. They seek information from their community in their district. And sometimes everybody is not going to think the same. But when we come into board meetings, you know, we lay out up on the table those things as most important. How would change affect, you know, each and every district that we're representing in? But I would say this, that people on the outside, because I was one of those people until I got on the school board. I was on the outside looking in, thinking that I could come in and do a whole lot of things. But we are mandated by policies and procedures and by laws and stuff. And so the policies really govern how the district is operated through the superintendent. So the superintendent handles things administratively that the board does not get involved in. That's his job when it comes to teachers. That's his job when it comes to curriculum and students. That's his job in aligning the district in order to be successful with the help of the school board. As you know, when Dr. Jones was stating in place, I called, said, well, let's have a meeting of the minds. You know, Dr. Jones, don't leave. You know, everybody's opinion was different because it was getting feedback from the community. And some of the feedback in the community was that he wasn't doing his job. We need new leadership. The academic growth is not showing, but all of this was. And I don't know how it got to the point that everything became negative and sour as it relates to the board not doing their job. The board just makes policies, procedures, and we help offset anything that the directors of schools bring to us in order to help it move forward. Our academic growth is on chart now. Okay? It may be limited in some areas, but we're working on additional resources to implement that underserved population in order that our district do move forward. I would say this, that this particular board that we have now, we have gained momentum to the fact that we have come to the point that we had decided about schools, those schools have been built or those schools are now being remodeled and some new are to come. And I say this wholeheartedly, everybody that's running don't have the best interest for the whole entire district. They only see one district, but we as a board, even though we represent a particular district, we have to represent the whole entire nine districts that's presented before us to make vital decisions. And I tell you this, it is not an easy one to make because we are governed by policies, procedures, mandates by laws and TSBA, National School Board Association as well. And so there's a lot of things that we have to consider before we think we can just walk in there and make changes. Like I said, I was like that before, but when I got in there and once I received the training and was, knowledge was presented to me, you know, then I said, okay, now I understand why board members were normally different in what they had agreed upon because they're being governed by people in the community. They're being governed by laws and statutes. And certainly, we just have to look collaboratively together, all nine board members, just to see how we can advance the growth and the curriculum in order to build success for students and schools.
All right. Let me go to where Ash. Robert, your reaction?
That's kind of a tough one because that was all over the place. I don't want to rehash a lot of what the last board has done. I'm running to try to get us back in the position that we deserve to be in. Jackson, Tennessee is a diamond in the rough in all of West Tennessee. The only thing that is holding us back is our school system. Only in the last three years have we started to see a turnaround on the testing scores and starting to move up. That is because we installed a universal curriculum that is something that has been much needed, especially for elementary-age children. Just by the nature of economics today, you have a lot of families who are right at or around poverty level that are leasing, that have to move during the middle of the year for one reason or another. You had seen in the past where their kids would get put into a new school that might be studying from a totally different set of books, nothing at all what they had been studying. Now we have a universal curriculum across all of the elementary schools so that if you leave one school and go into another, you're going to pick right up in the same general area that you left off. That is a huge positive. That is also something that we're starting to see some successes in, in how kids are testing. We've got a lot of the community that turns out to help in coaching reading. We know for an unarguable point that the earlier a child can successfully learn to read, the more successful they're going to be, not only as a student, but as an adult. Those start in pre-K and kindergarten. We have to take what is working with those and replicate that throughout the system. I'm a big believer in equity for all students. And right now, we have little pockets of successes, but they're not something that is equally available throughout the entire community. That's what we need to work towards changing. It's those kind of priorities that I'm looking for, not arguing about, you know, whether Pope is going to be a K-8, which was unanimously approved, and then spent the next six months trying to change it to be a K-12 and get a totally different piece of property that costs a whole lot more money instead of moving ahead with the plan that was on the table. That's just one of about 15 different areas where we had members of the school board going to the superintendent and telling him, this is what needs to be done versus the superintendent coming back to them and saying, I think we would be better served and our resources better spent if we could go in this direction. I want to restore that.
Comments from Andre here. Andre?
With all that being said, Steve, I just want to know what you want me to come in on.
Well, yeah, I probably let it get, you raised concern that the academic performance is not universal in the system. So what do we need to change or what would you like to see changed?
We need to change a lot. We have to get comprehension for all children. Whether they're poor children, whether they're gifted children, we have to make sure that comprehension starts before pre-K. We have to make sure that we're implementing strong, strong concern for these children's learning. We have to interact a lot more with the families. We have to interact a lot more with the teachers to let them know that we're here for them. We can't continue to let children pass from grade to grade and they don't know anything. And then we wonder why our tests, ACT, SAT, standardized, all these standardized testing are poor scores because the children don't know the things they should know. And they're passing by being allowed to say, they just have a certificate for 12 years of being in school. And that's not suffice for me because we're getting them ready to enter the jail. We're not getting them ready to be productive in the community to go on and gain a positive livelihood because they won't know anything. They won't have any sense of direction. That's a major concern when we have a lot of black and brown children, 70%, and they are passing and they don't know anything. That's a major concern. That's not just in this district. That's in the overall district for every.
What do we change to make that happen? I mean, because, you know, the academic performance has been a highlight and everything else. Are there things that you see out there where you say, look, we just got to do something different?
Rid of those standardized testing and not knowing how and what needs to be implemented. So now we have to work towards, if that's not working for us, you know, some kids do test poorly in standardized testing, but that does not mean that they don't meet the cut. But we also need to make sure that they understand what they're doing. And that's a part of that comprehension. And if we're not testing kids early from pre-grade, starting at pre-K and up, then we are doing a disservice to the children that we're supposed to be encouraging to graduate, to go off to college, to go to VOTEC school. We're not helping them. We're deteriorating the community. We're destroying our children of the new millennium. And we're not helping them at all. So we have to go in the right direction for that.
Well, I'm afraid on this plane glide too high and then bringing it for a landing soon enough. So let me go, let me go back because we're going to have to wrap this up and I hate that because there are a lot of things to discuss.
Right.
So, you know, so Andre, you know, the key thing is as far as your message in this campaign, when you want people to vote for you, for what reason?
I will be the voice. I will be loyal. I will be dedicated. You won't see me behind closed doors. You'll see me up front. Whenever you need me, I'll be available. I'm not just a phone call in person. It doesn't matter if you see me with my family. It doesn't matter if you catch me late at night, if a parent, teacher, anyone needs to get a hold of me. Those were the major concerns of not just teachers, but parents as well for my district that I'm representing now. They want a person that they can communicate, they can trust, that loyalty is not just there during election time, is there all the time. They want a visual person that they can see, that they know that's not just behind closed doors saying that they're working on policies, that they're working on what they need to be working on. We work for the people and the people need to make sure that they see us. So we need to make sure that if they give us their vote, that we do what they ask of us.
Okay. Thanks. Robert, you know, why should people vote for you? What's the key in this campaign or this race for you?
I would say that my whole race has been about wanting to restore function to our school board. It's become dysfunctional. A track record of five superintendents in 10 years is proof positive of that. We have a new chapter starting with a new superintendent. I think we need to elect a board that can get in and rally around Dr. King to help him build this team, to listen to all voices in the community, not just a handful of donors, and act on that accordingly. I love Jackson. Our school system is one of the only things holding us back with everything from economic development to tourism. The dollars that we could bring into this community, if we could turn this school system around, would be incredible. And what it would save and everything from property taxes to more money that it would generate to go back into the school system and put that money toward education would go miles for the future of this community, our children, their children and the future.
Thank you, Robert. Janice, what's the key to this place and why should you be reelected?
Well, I should be reelected because basically what Andrea and Robert have stated, you know, I'm running for the very same thing. I've run even while I was sitting in the seat in order to embrace the changes that we needed. And I would say now Jackson-Madison County School System is in its best area that it's ever been in the last couple of years. And I would say that we are gaining momentum as it relates to curriculum. Our teachers love the curriculum and we're seeing that academic growth as I stated before. Now, I'm running to ensure that I fulfill my promises to each and every one in my district because they said, we don't have who we need in order to move forward. And so Steve, this is the reason I said I only decided to run again in this particular term. And during my term, I have served as chairperson of the Policy Committee. I've been twice the vice chairman of the board and I served on the TSBA board and the National School Board in order to bring changes and to help implement and do well for the students and the teachers and the parents in my community. I brought forth the motion to create Education Foundation, that is, to get revenue back into our school district. I initiated the vote for a teachers retention committee because I have the teachers at heart. Education doesn't begin, not unless there's a teacher in the building. I brought forth the motion for open enrollment so that parents and students would have their say-so as to what school they would like to attend if they could attend it. I helped lead in the creation of JCM, JCM Early College High. I served on the Health Advisory Board. I led policy retreats to update all policies. I'm always an advocate for equity for all students. It's not always about the black and the brown. Those are the underserved students. And we're doing resources now as it relates to the underserved population. But people have to understand, there is other people of color in my district who has been underserved as well. I will say I'm leading efforts now for more workforce development, for fine arts and for micro society school. And with all this being said, we have what we need. So why make any additional changes?
Thanks a lot, Janice. We're telling we have to wrap up. You're exactly right. We could have gone all day with this one. I appreciate y'all doing this very much. Thank you to all three. Good luck to all of you. Thank you to all three. Good luck to all of you. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Chamber.
Thank you very much.
For the Chamber and E plus TV six.